Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the board to order. This is a special board meeting, and I look for a motion to approve the agenda, please. Trustee Lyra will move, seconded by trustee Boothby. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? If none, I'll call the question on the agenda. All those in favor? And opposed, the motion is carried. I look to Vice Chair Penny for the report from Committee of the Whole in camera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board met in camera this evening and reports and recommends as follows: that on a motion by trustee Fisher, which I will second, that the staff proceed as directed in the Committee of the Whole in camera with respect to a labour relations matter.
Thank you. The discussion was held in camera, and I will call the question now on a recorded vote. All those in favor?
In favor.
Trustee Campbell, trustee Ellis, trustee Fisher, trustee Penny, trustee Jenikins, trustee Lyra, trustee Scott, trustee Schwartz?
In favor.
And none opposed, so that is carried unanimously. Are there any matters for information this evening, Madam Director?
No further matters.
Thank you very much. Having reached the end of our agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned, and I remind trustees that we will be convening for Committee of the Whole public in at 7:30.
Good evening, trustees. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Acknowledge that our meeting is taking place on unceded Algonquin territory. I would like to thank the Algonquin Nation for hosting us on their land. At this point, I'd like to call for a mover to approve the agenda. Trustee Huff, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to call question on the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? And that passes. So moving on, I'd like to call upon the Chair to provide her briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to begin with a labour update. Last Friday, the OSSTF, the Ontario Secondary School Teachers Federation, announced it would be holding another day, a full day withdrawal of services at selected school boards. The school boards that will be experiencing this do not include the Ottawa-Carlton District School Board, and all of our schools will be open tomorrow. Second thing is that we are looking for applications from an interested member of the public to become a trustee on this board. We're inviting eligible candidates to apply for the position of public school trustee to represent Zone 10, Somerset-Kitchessippi, in the city of Ottawa. Interested candidates can visit the OCDSB website for more information on how to apply. Signed applications must be received no later than 12:00 noon on Friday, January 31, 2020. And finally, trustees Wendy Huff and Rob Campbell, along with OCDSB finance staff, will be hosting a community meeting to discuss budget priorities for the 2020-2021 academic year. The meeting will provide an opportunity to learn more about how spending decisions are made, and it will allow participants a chance to share their ideas about the directions the board might consider moving in the next academic year and beyond. The meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 15, at Woodruff High School from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that's all my briefing.
Thank you, trustee Scott. Are there any questions for trustee Scott, for the Chair? Seeing none, I'd like to turn to the Director to provide a briefing.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Kindergarten Registration Week and Information Nights, our official kindergarten registration week is January 20 to 27, 2020. Starting this week, schools across the district will be hosting kindergarten registration information sessions for the 2020-2021 school year. Dates and times will be posted in front of local schools and on the district and school websites. The 2020-2021 school year calendar survey, the OCDSB is inviting parents and students to complete a short survey about the next school year calendar at this time. Currently, we've received over 14,000 responses to the web-based survey. Participants will be asked to provide feedback on whether the winter break should take place, to when the winter break should take place, and whether two board holidays should be added. The survey will remain open until January 26, and a link can be found on the OCDSB website. We also have our student survey running. The deadline has been extended to January 19. The OCDSB is committed to improving equity of access and opportunity for all students. The district is therefore conducting a survey called the 2019 Student Survey. The deadline has been extended until January 19, and parents and students are encouraged to complete. And at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce our two newest superintendents who joined our team today. Superintendent Prince Dua and Superintendent Shannon Smith, who have joined us for our meeting tonight. Superintendent Dua will assume responsibility for schools in the Central Superintendency and the Extended Day Childcare Portfolio. Superintendent Smith will assume responsibility for the schools in the Western Superintendency, as well as continuing education and the alternate programs. All other superintendent, as with all other superintendents of instructions, they will continue with their current portfolio assignments, and we welcome Superintendent Smith and Superintendent Dua here tonight for their first official board meeting with the OCDSB.
Thank you very much, Madam Director. Are there any questions from trustees for the Director on her briefing? See, oh, trustee Campbell?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to follow up on a question that has been submitted to me as to whether we considered starting the school year next year just after Labor Day as per usual, why that was seen as not an option. I understand the options being put forward for consultation. The options being put forward for consultation include the possibility of extra holidays or extra days during the year, but if that's a possibility, then why not start school right after Labor Day? I guess what's been put to me is that a number of parents simply may not have their kids attend school until after Labor Day because that's what they're used to. So I'd just like to understand that a bit better.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. So that question was actually raised, and it was a part of our discussion. We have the challenge of the number of school days that we are required to have within the Education Act, and we do have the challenge around prescribed number of PA days, and we also have the challenge of a later end time, which then runs into the long weekend of Canada Day. So when we look at the beginning and the end parameters, we considered the fact that beginning before the Labor Day was not only the unoptimal choice, but also it is a choice that had previously been made in this district at a previous time. So this would not be the first time that that, in fact, has happened.
Appreciate very much the Canada Day considerations, I guess an equally important one. That we did it this way in the past is not necessarily a strong argument for me, but I appreciate the information. Thank you.
And I might remind everyone that I believe this item will be coming before us so we can have a more fulsome discussion at that time. All right, moving on to agenda item five, delegations. There are no delegations this evening. Then, therefore, moving on to item 6.1, matters for action, report 20-005. I'd like to call upon the Director to introduce this report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. The report is found on Folio 1. This evening, staff is bringing forward a draft policy, P142.SCO, child sexual abuse prevention, with a proposed consultation plan for trustee approval. The letter of transmittal notes that while it is that we have an existing policy that addresses matters of staff misconduct towards students, the proposed policy and subsequent procedure seek to advance a culture of care, dignity, and safety from a proactive prevention perspective. Trustees will be aware that the work to enhance staff awareness and capacity to recognize and act on potential risks to students is already underway. The policy and subsequent procedure will enshrine the expectations into a standard of practice for this organization. Associate Director Reynolds is the senior leader, senior team leader on this work and will guide the presentation of the letter of transmittal tonight, along with the draft consultation plan before you for approval. So I'll pass it now to A.D. Reynolds.
Great. Thank you, Director, and through you, Mr. Chair. I have with me this evening Principal Ryan Bean of Severn Public School, who has been instrumental in leading this work for the district and working alongside with senior staff, and I'm grateful to have her help with this and have her here to help address any questions that may come our way. So building on what the Director said, as you know, a number of years ago, and we continue to make a strong commitment to student safety and well-being. Beginning in 2018, we began working with the Canadian Centre for Child Protection, which is a national leading organization. It's a charity, and they are considered by many to be the lead organization in preventing child abuse and exploitation in Canada. To date, we have undertaken some initial training with our principals and vice principals. That's where the process really began. Following that, we had staff from the Canadian Centre meet with certain key individuals, including our bargaining unit presidents, social workers, staff in HR, labour relations, and from there we formed a district steering committee that was comprised of educators, noneducators, representing different areas in the district, and through that began taking a look at our policies and procedures and work that needed to be undertaken in order to make the district a safer place for all students. Most recently, in October, we undertook a fairly, well, a very significant training of all our school-based staff, teachers, ECEs, EAs, office staffs, custodians, in the Commit to Kids program, which is the centre's lead program for training adults and helping to create cultures in which child sexual abuse and exploitation could be reduced, if not eliminated. And to date, we've had over 7,300 staff complete that program and receive certification from the from the centre, which is, represents the vast bulk of all of our school-based staff. We're looking, going forward to continuing that work and determining how we continue training and spreading it. The most significant piece we need to do now is identify, through some work we did with the centre, is develop this policy, a draft policy that'll help create a culture in which child sexual abuse does not happen, to go alongside, as the Director mentioned, our procedure for addressing allegations of misconduct when they do occur. The draft policy you have before you seeks to provide definition and clarity for concepts such as appropriate contact with students, what is concerning behaviour, and identifying grooming behaviours, training requirements for staff, ensuring processes are in place for the reporting and addressing of concerning behaviours, and setting the requirement for an annual declaration on the part of all staff working directly with students to indicate that they understand and will follow that district direction, something that the centre thought would be very important for us and any child service. very important for us and any child-serving organization to have. And again, the approval of this policy is really specifically aimed at preventing child sexual abuse, to go alongside the procedure for addressing it once reported. So there's a consultation plan attached to this letter transmittal and draft policy that will allow for feedback from various stakeholders, students, staff, parents. The bulk of the consultation, we feel, really needs to occur with people with subject matter expertise. This is obviously a very sensitive matter and needs to be handled correctly. We've worked with our mental health team, and as I've mentioned, the Canadian Centre, Children's Aid, Ottawa Police have been involved, and will continue to work with those agencies in drafting our policies and procedures to make sure that we're identifying their correct behaviors, providing the appropriate training, and addressing it in the best manner appropriately. But that does not mean that other members of the community cannot have opportunities to provide feedback on the policy as well, and we're looking forward to receiving that input and information from them. Hopefully, as this process goes through the spring, we'll come back with a revised and updated policy for your consideration. And then, once passed, we'll develop the accompanying procedure, which will answer a lot of the questions around what this really looks like going forward. After that, there'll still be more to come. A big piece of the work is going to be working with our students and youth to make sure that they understand what healthy relationships with adults are, and provide them with strategies for navigating those relationships when they become concerning. And that'll be the focus of the Kids in the Know program, which is a curriculum-based program delivered or provided by the Center for Child Protection, which we're also looking at and trying to determine how best we can implement that in the district. So with that, I'll just turn things over to any questions which you may have.
Thank you very much, A.D. Reynolds. The first trustee on our list, trustee Boothby.
Thank you, and thanks for the report. Can I just confirm on page two, it talks about a risk assessment. Was that the center that did the risk assessment?
Thanks, through you, Mr. Chair. So the center does provide a number of resources and guidebooks in terms of implementing their various programs and making your organization safer. This was an activity that was structured through their resources. We completed it through that sort of multidisciplinary steering committee that I discussed, which included social work, legal advisor, risk management, educators, and we took a look at our policies and procedures to see where we had some gaps, and so that was the nature of the risk assessment.
Okay, thank you for that. I will happily move the recommendation on Folio 3, but I just have a couple of other items. So on page 5, in 2.4, we say disclosure means the process in which a student reveals victimization experiences. I would like us to remove the word victimization, because I don't like the connotation of that, and put in inappropriate, which is actually used elsewhere in the text. So I don't know if I need a motion to do that? Or if staff can just take that under advisement and bring it back for board?
Through you, Chair. And so at this point, given that we are still in a consultation process, that certainly is an item that would be taken under advisement and included in as a part of the consultation, because we do anticipate that within the consultation process, we will probably receive more feedback around some of the wording and the language and the choice and so forth, just like you have provided here tonight.
Okay, but I would like the consultation to go out with not that wording in it. I just find that a really inflammatory, not great way to address that.
So you're proposing amendment to the policy, trustee Boothby? All right, can we have the motion with that change in it?
Sure, I guess that's probably the way to do it, is that recommendation with the change. Sure, thank you. And just one more item. Oh, okay, sorry.
Are we, is that an amendment we're going to move and debate then, Madam Chair? Is that, Madam Chair?
It is actually an amendment to the thing that is being consulted on, so I think it should be moved separately and dealt with. And then, it would be the consultation plan for draft policy, et cetera, as amended, rather than what it says there, which is attached as appendix B.
All right, then I should consider the explanation that you just gave as your introduction, trustee Boothby?
Yes, please, and inappropriate should be one word in the wording up there for the change. Thank you.
All right, discussion on the amendment? Trustee Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering if staff have any comment in terms of the use of the word victim or victimization in terms of their interactions with our outside advisors who've contributed to the development of this draft?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. One of the reasons why I would have been, I was reluctant to simply make the change at the table is that we did develop this policy and the definitions, working with many, including the center and our legal advisor. That change may not be an issue from their perspective, but if, before I would endorse it, I would want an opportunity to go back and consult with them and make sure that they were in agreement, rather than they've lifted these terms perhaps from some source or definitions from some source that we, you know, we would be inclined to respect. If it's passed through motion, then that happens. But I would, my preference would be to take it under strong advisement and go back and consult, but I wouldn't have an opportunity necessary to come back here to report that before we went out for consultation without delaying the process.
I believe I still have the floor for a minute, Mr. Chair?
That's correct.
Yeah, I guess, given the nature of the expert consultation that we've already had on this, and given my knowledge that I believe the College of Teachers and a number of teachers' federations in Ontario and elsewhere across the country have also introduced their own in-house policies around, with a view to protecting students and teachers alike in the context of child sexual abuse events. I'm a bit hesitant to change the policy at this point in time. There will be an opportunity to remove that word when it comes back, if that is the desire of the board, but I really, I really don't know whether there's a lot of merit in making the change at this point in time, so I will not be supporting the amendment.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lyra?
So, I, in principle, support this amendment. The word victim, or by extension victimization, is an incredibly loaded word. And if we want people in our community with experiences to come forwards, calling them victims in this consultation might not be something that they're going to want to identify with. And so if we want to empower survivors of child sexual assault, calling them all victims and then asking them to come and to meaningfully consult, I think is going to undermine their choice of words. I very much support inappropriate, and I really do think that that is a meaningful and substantive change, and so I'm going to be supporting this amendment.
Thank you. Students, Senator Mwaki Benati?
I was just wondering, on page 6, 4.1A, if you could elaborate on creating a culture of awareness about grooming and child sexual abuse?
Is this a question related to the amendment, student senator?
No.
Okay, because, so maybe we couldn't wait until after to ask that question then. Trustee Campbell?
Thank you very much. I'm generally like the proposed rewording, I think, because it seems to me to be a broader category, less narrow. There may be some people who may experience inappropriate experiences who may not regard themselves as victims in a classical sense. So I think that the word inappropriate is broadening, perhaps usefully. However, I guess what I'm wondering is whether we could maybe get comment from experts or through staff for board, maybe defer a change right now, and maybe get that comment and consider things later on. I guess that would be my suggestion.
Thank you very much, and seeing no more debate, send it back to trustee Boothby for a wrap-up of her amendment?
Thank you. So I appreciate staff's comments about the word having come out of the consultations that they have done. We do have an opportunity at board to either adopt this or take it back. I also appreciate trustee Campbell, his comments about inappropriate does make it broader. I personally would like to see this word go away, because, as I said, I just find it inflammatory, and I agree with trustee Campbell, that people may not really see themselves as a victim, but have experienced some, what they consider quite inappropriate. So I would urge my colleagues to vote to have it changed, inappropriate, but at any rate, I think, I don't have a problem if we wait until we hear back from staff at board and change it at that time. So if it doesn't pass here, I'll raise it again aboard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to call a question on the proposed change, changing the word from, remove the word victimization and replace it with inappropriate. All those in favor?
Words in favor.
And that passes. And we're back to the main recommendation as moved by trustee Boothby, and I think you maybe still had some time left, trustee Boothby?
Thank you, and I just had one other comment on page 11. Ottawa Carlton Assembly of School Councils is not checked. However, in the box below it, it talks specifically about consulting with O-CASK, so we just need to check that box. Thank you.
Staff comment, is that... Okay, thank you very much. And trustee Fisher?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the report. You know, obviously, as a board, our, probably our most important responsibility that we have is the protection of our students, and so I think this is obviously an incredibly important discussion, particularly as we continue to see cases arise historically and, you know, in terms of abuse that we're still handling as a board. I guess the one difficulty that I have with the report, and I do have some basic questions about the policy, but, and this kind of references the risk assessment, or alludes to the risk assessment that trustee Boothby had mentioned previously. You know, for me, it's going to be really difficult to really make any decision on supporting a consultation plan when I, you know, I've never seen the risk assessment, I don't know what's in the risk assessment, I have no idea whether or not the policy that's being proposed aligns to the risk assessment. So, you know, I think until, for me at least, until I see or have a better sense of what the risk assessment said and what the gaps are and how this policy fixes that, I can't just say, go off and consult on this policy when I have no idea whether or not I think that this policy is meeting any of those, any of those critical gaps. I think that's my more critical comment. But I think just in terms, generally, when I read the policy, I was struck, when I read item 2.4, the disclosure line, where it says, you know, disclosure means the process in which a student reveals victimization or inappropriate experiences. I'm wondering if staff can explain why we wouldn't have included parent or guardians, you know, in that, in that process, or potentially OCDSB staff, and sort of why we're just leaving it to students, the onus on students to sort of bring these cases forward, because obviously these experiences can be, can be quite traumatic. So I would imagine if a parent had found out about it, you know, we would want to know if another staff member had found out about it, we would want them to know. So I'm just wondering why we limited it to students in that, in that case?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. There's a distinction, I think, between the term disclosure and reporting. Disclosure, again, recalling the conversations with the subject matter experts, is specific to the person who has had the experience coming forth and sharing with someone that this has happened, as opposed to reporting, which is a witness or third party to the experience coming forward and reporting that. There is a heavy onus in the procedure, draft procedure, I'm sure, in particular, as well as in the policy, on staff having a responsibility to report when they become aware, either through disclosure or through observation. We don't actually want to place responsibility on the students, who, we want them to share, and we want to create an environment where they feel comfortable doing so, but we don't want to further make them, perhaps having been the subject of an inappropriate experience, and then breaking a policy at the same time if they choose not to disclose. So that, I hope that addresses your question.
Yeah, that's a lot clearer, thank you. And maybe we can, there's a way of addressing some of that terminology to make sure that it's crystal clear in terms of what we mean by those terms. The other question I have is on 4.0C. We say ensuring processes are in place for reporting and investigating concerning behavior. I'm wondering why there isn't scope for, you know, some kind of a process or an indication of a process for providing proper supports to students where abuse has been confirmed? Is that articulated somewhere else? We talk about reporting and investigations, and we don't talk about a process about actually providing supports to students who, where their confirmed abuse has occurred?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I can't recall off the top of my head if we do, when we go into procedure 542, which I think is the reporting alleged misconduct, if it does go into the providing supports for students or youth who've had those experiences, it's certainly something we could look to expanding further upon in the accompanying procedure, once we have the draft policy. It's certainly something that we intend to do as a district and do do.
I would appreciate that. I think it's something that should be stated in the policy. And I guess one final comment in terms of the consultation plan, you know, given that this is around student sexual abuse and students, I'm surprised that students aren't identified as being a targeted audience for consultation. And I guess just lastly, and I had mentioned, I had asked the CFO this before the meeting, and I wasn't on the committee, I think, when the risk assessment was done, but we might also want to consider at least making the audit committee aware that we're coming forward with this policy. And the reason why I'm suggesting that is, you know, because this board has had a number of cases over the years in recent, in recent years relating to this very issue, you know, not to say that it's systemic, but I think it's a critical enough risk that I think that at least the audit committee should have a chance to provide you comments on what's being proposed. Not to delve deeply into the risks, but to at least provide some feedback on the proposed approach.
Thank you very much. Student trustee, Wijira?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since my time here as a student trustee, I do have to say that this is one of the more prominent and important policy reviews that I've had the chance to read over. Thank you to staff for putting this together. Just adding on to trustee Fisher's comments, I'm looking at page, Folio 11 of the package. I'm looking at subsection four, where it says, who will be consulted, and it's, students aren't checked off as a consultation group. Does that mean that students will be consulted at a later time and that they're just not included here, or is it just an omission? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and through you, Mr. Chair. It is, as mentioned earlier, most of the consultation will focus on individuals, groups, organizations with a certain degree of subject matter expertise, but there are opportunities for students, parents, staff to provide input. The intention was not to deliberately seek a consultation with students. I did mention that one of our plans, though, is to implement the Commit to Kids program, which would provide students over time with the necessary, for lack of a word, education to understand what a healthy relationship looks like. One of the main things that this policy and the training is trying to get at is addressing grooming-type behaviors, which are very, very subtle behaviors that are designed by a wrongdoer, a perpetrator, to gradually blur the line between what would, might be an appropriate adult-student relationship to an inappropriate one. And there are behaviors that are designed to kind of, like I said, normalize that. They're very subtle, they're hard to identify. Through training and education, such as the Commit to Kids, that the staff receive and the kids in the know, then our students will be empowered, which is more of our intention to empower our students, with the knowledge that they need to understand when adult, you know, relationships with adults or other people... that they need to understand when adult, you know, relationships with adults or other people in power or authority are becoming, you know, be able to translate that icky or wrong feeling to something a little more concrete and help them to disclose and report. So, it, it's true, it was not an omission. That's not our, it wasn't our intention at this time, but we do have the intention to educate and empower our students in this area.
Thank you for that. And the next, I'm looking on page, Folio six, 4.1A, where it discusses creating a culture of awareness about grooming and sexual, child sexual abuse. Student trustee Ganabot and I have had the opportunity to go to a few roundtables, and we've learned that there remains, on a culture of unfortunately unawareness about how to properly report these incidents that are inappropriate. As a student trustee, I'd like to suggest that an adult trustee move an amendment that would also add to this subclause, "Creating a culture of awareness about grooming, comma, child sexual abuse, semicolon, and procedure to report incidents." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Moulison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I was going to mention was already brought up by Trustee Boothby. It was about the omission of OCASK on Folio 11. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Student Senator Mwaki Benetti?
It's so, sorry. It's okay. I don't, it's been clarified by, thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lyra?
I would like to move an amendment to Folio 11, 4.1A, to remove the first word "and", and then add "and pro, procedure to report incidents" as requested by the student trustees.
All right. Well, just quickly getting that up on screen so that the words are clear to everyone?
It will read, "Creating a culture of awareness about grooming, comma, child sexual assault, comma, and procedure to report incidents."
All right. Would you like introduction to that?
I believe trustee Wujiwara said everything. Thank you.
So, does the text reflect your amendment, Trustee Lyra?
There's a missing Oxford comma, but I'm not picky.
All right. So, that's the amendment before us. Trustee Campbell?
I wonder whether comma isn't necessary. In this instance, I must want to create a, a culture of procedure, but...
I think it's a culture of awareness about...
Fair enough.
The, the comma goes after the second "and," so that it's creating a culture about grooming, a culture about child sexual abuse, and a, sorry, an awareness about grooming, an awareness about child sexual abuse, and an awareness about procedures to report incidents. It sets it as a list, which each of the three is independent clauses to the awareness about.
Appreciate it. I prefer the final comma, but I'm fine.
Is that where you want the comma, Trustee Lyra?
I believe that is where the student trustees requested it, yes.
Okay. Any debate? Trustee Boothby?
Could we just have a staff comment on it, please?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. It's, it's almost more of a question. Reading through the rest of 4.1, we see in B that the intention is to create an open dialogue and around appropriate behavior and understanding how to raise concerns, and then C further goes into ensuring processes are in place for reporting and investigating concerning behavior. So, I'm, I'm just not 100% sure what's missing from those that, that addition will help address.
Further comments or questions? Trustee, student trustee Wujiwara?
Thank you very much, and staff does have a valid concern. The goal of the amendment was more that there is an inherent lack of awareness of how to report it. So, even to, to get to the point where they're having a discussion and where there is, so that, where the point where they're using the reporting systems that are in place, students are unaware that they can have an open dialogue and that they can access the reporting procedures. There's, yeah, students are just generally unaware of the safety net procedures that are in place in other contexts, and then it would likely apply to this context as well. Thank you very much. And if you have any other further questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you very much. Trustee Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I absolutely agree with the concern being raised by student trustee Wujiwara, but I, I do have some concern as to whether or not it necessarily belongs in this piece. The culture of awareness is one thing. The culture of open dialogue and understanding how to raise concerns is the second piece of it. And surely, the, the procedures to report incidents falls into the understanding how to raise concerns. And then the last part is ensuring processes are in place for reporting, which, which gets to the, the, the procedures piece of it. So, when you take the three clauses together, I'm not sure that adding this to the first item in the list necessarily does the thing. Really, where it's added already in the policy is in 4.1B and in 4.1C, which address the how to raise concerns and how to report. So, I, I'm not sure that this, this amendment is necessary at this time.
Thank you very much. Trustee Ellis?
I, I think trustee Scott may have sort of touched on what I'm thinking. Perhaps in wrap-up, the mover can explain. I, I'm reading this as an intent that literature, either on the website or there, and some access, easy access for students in perhaps a proactive manner, not in a reactive manner, that these, there is a process for students to report and that we encourage them and, you know, just some, some literature around that for students that, that explains their, what's in place for them to address it if they're unfortunate enough to have inappropriate procedure. And I'm wondering if it might be better as a specific, a new specific directive to make sure that in the procedures, that that's in place and that at every school and easily accessible to students is the information for them to follow up.
Thank you, trustee Ellis. Seeing no further debate, I'm going to turn to trustee Lyra for wrap-up of her motion.
So, I am actually going to be voting against this motion. I brought it forward at the request of the student trustees. I do feel it is captured in parts B and part C. That's all. Thank you.
And so, I'm going to call the question on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And that is defeated. And we're going to go back to the main motion now, and trustee Ellis.
Yes, I remember what I wanted. You know, this is, and rightly so, about preventing it, and, and one would hope that we are able to be 100% successful. However, if we do find ourselves in an unenviable, unenviable position, you know, we, we need to support our students in the process, and many people who have experienced this have also expressed that an apology or a recognition of what they're going through has been very helpful in their moving forward in healing. We do have a, I forget the law, that an apology doesn't necessarily mean an admission of guilt. And I'm just wondering if that were stated in our policy, if that might even reinforce, you know, that we would apologize to victims. If it was in our policy, would that give us greater safety in applying, or, or in applying that ability, that law, that we can apologize without being held against us in a court of law? And would we like that in our policy? And to staff, I guess, if, if we'd like to, if this policy would be the place to embed that?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. While it is that, that certainly is a concept that has received much discussion, and there is validity, of course, to what trustee Ellis is sharing with us. My question would be whether or not we would see this as an appropriate place. My submission at this time would be that this policy actually focuses on proactive, preventative moves, as opposed to responsive moves, which is a part of our misconduct policy. And so, my submission at this point would be that this would not be the place for a responsive component. It doesn't preclude us from considering that in other perspectives or in other contexts, but I would submit that this would not be the appropriate context.
Sort of along that line is, you know, we recognize in 3.5, or 3.6, that, you know, it's profoundly, a profound experience and negative, that I think there'd be the intention that we would support the student in it. So, I'm wondering where, if that, that concept might be part of this policy, or would we be looking at a separate policy or to deal with supporting any of our students who may experience sexual misconduct?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So, and I invite a comment from the executive officer, if I'm wrong. You know, the, the purpose of the policy is to provide a fairly high-level policy directive to, to staff, and then we would be tasked with developing procedures to enact the, the policy. So, if passed, if there's language in there around recognizing and providing support, then the procedure is typically, I think, where we would see that fleshed out as to the how we would go about doing that and provide that sort of detail. That's my general understanding of how policy and procedure work together. So, taking your comments and some of the feedback received through this process, that'll help very much shape, you know, the procedure that will, you know, enact the final policy.
I see an apology as supporting a student who has experienced this. So, you can sort of see my somewhat circular logic, but none of that is sort of explicit in the policy. So, I don't know in this consultation whether those concepts of supporting the student, which may or may not include an apology from the organization, will be part of this consultation.
New response?
Certainly, and I would certainly imagine that, that might be, and it's quite likely, that that would be a concept that emerges. And I would want to reiterate A.D. Reynolds' point that much of this feedback, while it may inform the final shape of the policy, may also continue us on with the shape of the procedure. And we do know that our procedures are very directive from the point of view of giving, giving, building capacity around how to respond, how to be proactive. And so, certainly, some of the feedback that we will receive will be reflected in some of the items that will show up in the procedural component. We need to be careful with the policy component around going too deeply into the how-tos and the operationalizing of a variety of issues that are raised, because that is the domain of the procedure.
Thank you very much. Trustee Campbell?
Thank you very much. Last thought, actually sparked by a earlier comment originally by trustee Fisher, and that is with respect to the consultation with students. And I understand and accept that it's not necessarily being proposed to consult with students broadly at large. It could be an issue with our template, our consultation template here, but I look to our student representatives around the table here for a possible comment. We have school councils, and we have the umbrella organization representing school councils, but we don't have student councils, and we don't have the student senate as bodies that we would consider checking off for consultation. So, I guess what I wonder is whether we might not consider consulting with all students at large, but would we consider consulting with, say, the student senate? But this is maybe not the kind of matter that the student senate takes up or is interested in. And I don't mean to impose a certain view, and this is why I would look to our student representatives to let us know whether that, they would regard consult, a request to consult on this as something they would welcome or not. So, I just put that out there.
Any comment?
I do think that it's something that we would be interested in as a senate, because we are students who make up the board, who represent the people at our school, and we do know many of the experiences, and we would know what would happen and kind of what the people at our school go through and what they think and what they would do if something would happen. Thank you.
Trustee Wujiwara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in general, I do think that the, the student senate is always, especially the senators, are always looking for meaningful projects to work on. Staff have been very good this year with providing consultation projects for our student senators to work on. I've heard from in the past that when student senators are given projects that, or, yeah, projects from staff that may not seem meaningful, they understand it and they sense it. So, the student senators are always looking for meaningful consultation work. In terms of the form itself, I think it would be a good idea to highlight student councils and the student senate, and as well as president's council separately on the form, maybe under a umbrella tab, perhaps like student voice groups. It just makes it a little bit more specific, and then it creates like more options for staff to consider if they do want to do a consultation, because it's, it does take quite a bit of resource to consult all students, but perhaps going to student senate and consulting them could just be the student trustees talking with the student senate and seeing what they have to say. Thanks.
Taking that into account, I'll throw it out there that we should check off or include in the verbiage somehow consultation opportunities with the student senate.
So, that sounds like an amendment to me of some sort. And so, would you like to provide the wording of your amendment exactly so that we can have it on the screen?
I'd like, I don't know if there's not necessarily wording, but a, a checkbox added for student senate and that the, the box be checked.
All right. And that is your introduction as well? Okay. Any debate on that?
Mr. Chair, is it friendly?
Oh, very, very well. Is, is that a friendly amendment? Looks like it's friendly, so. All right. I think you still have some time, Trustee. All right, I think you still have some time, Trustee Campbell. Okay, let's, we need to vote on the amendment? Let's vote then. All those in favor of the amendment?
It's friendly.
Well, that's what I thought. Trustee Campbell, you still have some time? See Scott then?
Thank you, and, and I appreciate the work that staff have put into this, working with our various partners already, because I do believe this is an important policy for us to articulate. Yes, there are changes I would like to see in this policy. I'm not going to try to amend them now, because I personally prefer to hear what other people think and then look at the whole thing instead of forcing my amendments there simply because I had a first crack at it. It would, as Trustee Fisher has suggested, have been helpful to have had a little more understanding of the risk assessment and its findings before, before bringing this forward to send out for consultation. So my first question is, will it be possible to get a little more information on that risk, risk assessment between now and the time of our board meeting?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So that exercise of a risk assessment, we can describe in more detail, the types of questions that were used. It was really a group activity where we broke into groups with guiding questions and took a look through our policies and procedures to try to identify any gaps that may be there. We, you know, identified some areas for improvement going forward, but this was one that was missing from the perspective of the recommendation of the center and their resources. I mean, I can, I can provide you more of a description of it, otherwise you're getting into sort of all the backup material that was done for the, you know, the, okay, so that's not what you're seeking. More of a description of what that activity looked like and what it concluded. There was not a formal report generated from that. It was more in the, in the notes of the, of the chairs of the working group. We can take a look through it and summarize it.
I think a description of the, of the activity and what kinds of things were reviewed would be, would be quite, quite adequate. It's just, it's just that when we are, when we are having these things done, it's, it's nice for us to have some sense of what was done, but that doesn't mean we, we do really need or want to go through all of the background material or have a word-by-word description of everything that happened in the discussions. So thank you for that. Second thing is, in terms of modifying the, the consultation plan template, I think that there are certainly some changes we might want to introduce on that. The question is whether we want to make it more detailed or whether we actually want to make it less detailed and more broad. Frankly, the student senate at the behest of the student trustees can consult, can discuss anything like this. They don't have to be, have a tick box on a consultation plan in order to say, oh, that's coming up for, for discussion at committee of the whole. We should have that on our student senate agenda. So, and our, our student trustees certainly have tended not to be hesitant about asking for such things when they could see things coming forward that were clearly of interest to students. So, so I'm not too worried about that part. But certainly, what we really want and need here is some, some good solid input. Are these policy statements the kinds of things that are articulating what, what we need to be saying? And are there things we've left out? Are there things we've said incorrectly? I'm sure we will have a variety of response, but a lot of it, the, the general public input, I'm sure will be just as interesting to review as the expert opinion of, of some of the people who work in the field. So I, I thank you for that, and I will certainly be supporting sending this out for consultation.
Thank you very much. And seeing no further debate, we're going to turn it back to Trustee Boothby for wrap-up.
Thank you, Chair. I think we've had a good discussion, and no further wrap-up is required. Thanks.
Okay, then I'd like to call the question on the motion and policy as amended. All those in favor?
Schwartz in favor.
Abstentions? And that passes. All right, moving on in the agenda to report some statutory committees and other committees. Item 7.1, Advisory Committee on Equity. I'd like to call for a mover to receive the report on Advisory Committee on Equity dated November 28th, 2019. Trustee Campbell or Ellis? Trustee Campbell moves that. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'd like to call the question in that report. All those in favor? Opposed?
Schwartz in favor.
And that passes. Item 7.2, Special Education Revisory Report of December 4th, 2019. I'd like to call for a mover. Trustee Boothby?
On the receipt of the report.
Are there any errors or omissions to that report? Trustee Boothby?
Thank you. On folio 26, I'm not listed in the members as having been there, and I am listed a fair amount in the report, so I was there. So that's the first one. Under Staff and Guests, Daniel Bershinau from Student Senate, he should be under the non-voting association representatives, I believe. So if we could have him moved there. On, oops, thank you. On folio 20 or 32, one, two, three, four, on the fourth bullet where it says, "Trustee Boothby noted," and then if we go down to the third to the last sentence there, it talks about "reach ahead credit acquisition possibilities." I don't think we have that in the summer learning program, so I'm not sure what was said there, but it certainly wasn't anything to do with reach ahead, so I guess we need to just strike the reach ahead there. And the next paragraph down where it says, "Pay what you can," it should read "equity issue" instead of "equity platform." And then the next bullet down that starts "the voluntary fee association," association doesn't belong there, it's just a voluntary fee, is $70. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Trustee Boothby. Very, very thorough. Any other errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'd like to call the question on receipt of this report as corrected by Trustee Boothby. All those in favor? Opposed? And that passes. All right. It's a bit too early for a break, so let's start this item 8.1, Matters for Discussion. Report 19-109, Status of English with Core French Program. And I'd like to call upon the director to introduce the report.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. In response to the motion that was tabled by trustees on May 28th of 2019, trustees will find on folios 37 to 46, a report outlining key patterns from the inquiry into the data, comparing enrollment patterns in French immersion programs with English with core, with core French programs. The report endeavors to describe the patterns of enrollment in our elementary programs and explores the intersection of these enrollment patterns with the socioeconomic realities, special education programming factors, IEP, English language learner uptake trends, and geographic patterns inside, outside the green belt. Additional consideration has been given also to how enrollment trends at the elementary level translates into academic or applied pathways in high school. The complexity of impact, patterns, and outcomes of program selection is very evident in the exploration of this data. While staff has attempted to provide some considerations for next steps within the report, I would urge trustees to contemplate the questions that are emerging pertaining to student learning and student experiences, and consider carefully what relevant information is required to answer these questions. While staff has made every effort to respond to the inquiries within the trustee motion by providing various iterations and combinations of data, it has become increasingly clear that for each data set, more inquiries could be surfaced that require additional data sets. It is very important for us to consider in the conversation this evening that while the data sets may reveal patterns, the data in and of itself does not reveal conclusions nor cause. We recognize that this report only begins to touch on patterns that have been observed through the lived experiences of our students, our staff, our families, and our communities. At this point, the question will be, will be, sorry, will more data reveal a different picture, or do we now require research into the possible avenues to redirect trends or improve outcomes? What we have to ask is whether or not our current structure vigorously pursues high expectations for all students. Does the program delivery structure prioritize the well-being and dignity of all students by removing barriers to equity of access, opportunity, and outcomes? In other words, I would urge trustees to explore the questions emerging from the data and subsequent considerations for next steps forward with our strategic commitments in mind. This is an important opportunity tonight and in the subsequent discussions to engage in a thoughtful path forward together, and we do look forward to the discussion and the feedback that we can carry from it. And I'd like at this point to turn the discussion to Manager Ostafczuk, who will lead us through the presentation, supported by CFO Carson and A.D. Reynolds. Manager Ostafczuk.
I drew the short straw, so I'll start things off. But I was also joined by Planner Mark LaBelle and a number of other staff are in the room to help answer questions as we go forward. So as you may recall, this report is generated in response to a motion that was passed in May of this year, sorry, last year. And the motion, as you can see on the slide if you wish, directed that firstly, staff examine enrollments and trends in the English core French program as compared to other elementary offerings. And staff was to more specifically examine special education, English language learners, and socioeconomic factors disaggregated in a number of different fashions, as the director had indicated. Staff was also to examine high school program pathways. In Part B, staff was to also identify advantages or disadvantages related to findings and strategic changes that might address any concerns that are identified. At the time when the motion was passed, staff did indicate that headway could fairly easily be made in, in terms of Part A, but for Part B, it would certainly be more challenging, and that it was going to require, you know, greater conversation and direction and discussion before we'd be able to really move forward with that portion. So, taking a look at the current delivery models that we have within the district, there are three. Initially, there's the English program with core French, which we'll call the English program, grades one to eight. Students in this program receive instruction in all subject areas in English with instruction in core French 40 minutes daily. Secondly, we have English program with early French immersion, which we'll refer to as EFI, in grades one to eight, and students in this program receive instruction in both English and French. In grade one, students receive 80% of instruction in French. In grades two to six, 60% of their instruction is in French, and in grades seven to eight, it is 50%. And then thirdly, we have English program with middle French immersion, MFI, grades four to eight. Students receive instruction in both English and French in grades four to six, 66% of that instruction is in French, and in grades seven to eight, 50% is in French. When looking at this information, the motion, and the information we gathered afterwards, we've asked ourselves these three things. Is there a current problem with our delivery structures? Through what lens should the issue or issues be examined or evaluated? And are there challenges faced in delivery of English programming tied to operational issues, program quality, community perception, lack of knowledge about the program, or the location of available program? So we've broken the examination up into a few different ways. Choice of program, the historical and projected enrollment of elementary students by program, retention rates in those programs, grade A program data, and secondary school pathways based on program choice. That information is within the report. Program delivery structures, the breakdown of the number of programs in elementary schools, administrative structures, and facility utilization. And then lastly, student enrollment patterns. Students who have been identified in congregated special education classes, students who receive ELL or English language learning support, and students with individual education plans.
The graph before you illustrates how the uptake of EFI has changed over a number of years. Hopefully, everyone can read that correctly. Currently, just over 70% of our students opt for the EFI program beginning in grade one. There are a number of influences on this trend, and it's really hard to predict how it's going to continue. The last district needs analysis saw the uptake for EFI leveling off somewhat, but there have been a number of other influences that have come into play since the crafting of that document. Most importantly, the delivery model for kindergarten has changed, and we don't have enough of a track record with 50/50 to predict trends accurately. The grade area at the end of the chart has a high limit that simply continues that growth trend. The lower limit is one that was expressed in the DNA. So we feel that continued uptake for EFI will land somewhere in that gray area in between. It's most logical to think that it would be there. The perception of our French as a second language programming, particularly EFI, has always tended to focus on the over 70% uptake at the beginning of the program. What we have not examined extensively is the outcomes. By the time our students are in grade eight, the split between English core French and EFI is almost 50/50. Comparing those two programs only, there is another group in the totality of the elementary enrollment that also opts for MFI. While retention is improving all the time, students tend to leave the EFI program, according to our data, after grades one or two largely, and then after grade six. There's also a big impact of the number of children who move into our district after grade one, who do not access EFI. Historically, if they've arrived in Ottawa between grades one and four, these students have been enrolled in the English core French program with an opportunity for immersion in grade four with MFI. If the students came to the district after grade four, they typically stuck with the English core French program all the way through. While the number of Delft, Delft participants has steadily increased, and certainly we've acknowledged that this, this measure is, is a better measure of proficiency, the number of our students who graduate with an immersion certificate is not representative of those students who enrolled in immersion French in the elementary level. While this data is more anecdotal, using the schools as a quick resource, our high school graduates last, of our high school graduates last June, only slightly more than 20% graduated with an immersion certificate. A further 8% received a certificate in extended French, which is the seven credits versus 10 that it takes for the full immersion certificate. We don't know the exact reason for this, but again, anecdotally, it has been reported back that the courses and the sorts of courses required in French to obtain this certificate may not align perfectly with the desires of graduating students. It should also be noted that up until this particular cohort of high school students, there were high schools that only offered extended French as opposed to immersion French in each of our schools. For example, Canterbury and Colonelby offered extended French, and with the other objectives and requirements of these high schools, it's understandable that immersion French was not a focus for a number of these students.
So taking a further look at choice of program, there are a number of observations regarding program choice that speak to the advantages and disadvantages contained in the motion. Firstly, grade viability. As English core French program enrollment decreases, grade viability is challenged. Sufficient enrollment for grade-specific elementary English classes varies widely across the district. While the ultimate goal may to have at least a one and a half classes at each grade level to offer sufficient program choice at the local community school and our school as close as possible. close as possible to the home community, this is not always possible. Where there are not enough students to support a single class at a grade level, classes are doubled and sometimes even tripled to provide enough critical student mass to form the class. In 2018-19, there were six hundred and ninety English classes. Of these classes, fifty-nine percent had straight grade levels. Forty percent had split grades, and one percent were triples. This in comparison to EFI classes where eighty-one percent are straight grade and nineteen percent were split grades, and there were no triples in that year. Multi-grade classes. Multi-grade classes can be viable, but when a school has a single multi-grade class for several years, there are wider educational implications. Some opportunities may be limited within the scope of the program, and student placement flexibility is seriously impeded. When decisions are made concerning program placement through accommodation reviews or new school construction, every effort is made to offer English programs in dual-track sites, typically along with MFI. Where there's been a history of demand for the program, of the one hundred and eleven elementary sites in the district, sixty-five are currently dual-tracked in this way. Thirdly, multiplicity of program choice. The OCDSB offers a lot of program choice. While there is the commitment to offer program choice in local community schools wherever possible, it has become increasingly more difficult to achieve that goal with the wide range of choice available. To be able to offer robust English programming, many programs have been congregated across the district over time, creating larger catchment areas. Given the predicted continuing decline of the English enrollment, and decisions will need to be made about whether we maintain the current approach, larger catchment areas due to dwindling enrollments, or possibly to create congregated centers for English programs, much as we did for EFI earlier on in the program's development. Both approaches result in students being unable to attend their local community school should they choose the English program. There is a shortage of qualified French teachers as a consideration. There is a shortage of qualified French and experienced French teachers occurring across the province and Ottawa, and the OCDSB is not an exception. It is becoming increasingly difficult to staff French teaching positions, particularly once it occurs during the school year and with possible predicted growth in the French immersion programs. These shortages may become even more acute. Retention rates in EFI program have also increased historically from fifty-two-point-nine percent in two thousand and three to seventy-two-point-nine percent in 2018, as outlined in the historical retention rates chart noted in Appendix D. And lastly, the ability to track students' secondary school pathways in relation to their elementary school programming is not a simple task, given the range of course selections at secondary school. For the purpose of this report, data has been collected on students' English and mathematics choices in grade nine in relation to their grade A program. In 2017-2018, ninety-eight percent of students in grade eight EFI and MFI opted to take academic English, and two percent enrolled in applied English. In the same year, ninety-three percent of students in grade eight EFI and MFI enrolled in academic math, and seven percent enrolled in applied mathematics. The students who were taking grade eight English, only sixty-four percent of those enrolled in academic English in their grade nine year, and fifty percent chose academic mathematics. These percentages have been stable over the past few years.
The chart before you looks at elementary program delivery structures within the OCDSB. Single-track schools have only one program. Dual-track will have a combination of two program offerings, and triple-track will support three programs. The OCDSB has one hundred and eleven elementary schools. That is the number we used based on the data at the time of the writing of this report. And of those schools, thirty-three have single-track programs, fifteen are English, and fourteen have only EFI, four have only alternative. Sixty-five have dual-track programming. There are fifty-two English EFIs, twelve English MFI schools, and one EFI-MFI schools. Twelve are triple-tracked, English EFI-MFI, and one school has all programs, English EFI, MFI, and alternative. We've also developed a matrix that was issued electronically as an appendix to this report, and we do have larger formats here tonight for people's reference. It lists all of our elementary schools and the information we gathered associated with each school in one document. We've noted the location of these schools, broken down by urban, inside the green belt, suburban, development areas outside the green belt, and rural schools. Historically, there has been differing uptake for French programs in these areas. The other factors worthy of mention is size of facility and utilization. English core French schools tend to be smaller facilities to begin with, not lending themselves well to dual-tracking, and generally have lower utilization factors. Student enrollment patterns is something that we really focused on as part of this report. So we looked at the specialized program class location. Of the fifteen single-track English schools, seven schools have specialized program classes. The notable comparison is only two single-track EFI schools out of fourteen in the system have students identified in this category. This data core relates to the utilization factors. When searching for a site to locate a specialized program class, English schools have tended to be the sites that have room for additional classes rather than the EFI sites that may be fully utilized. This is something that we've really tried to focus on in accommodation reviews, as we've done them lately, to take a different approach to this. However, that fact remains. When you're looking for a quick fix, if you will, for a location of a class, you look to the spots you have room. Parental perceptions about English programming may well be influenced by the number of specialized program classes that we find in these schools. The second thing we looked at is the number of students with individual education plans. At the time of writing this report, we knew that the distribution of students with IEPs was fairly consistent through all schools. But since that time, we've been able to break the information down by program, and that is the memo that you had placed on your desks this evening. What we know is that there are greater numbers of students with IEPs in the alternative and English programs, certainly. What we still don't have is data on the range of what these individual IEPs mean and what sort of supports and resources it does take to support them. It ranges quite dramatically. The number of English language learners was also examined in the report. The number of students identified as English language learners in single-track English schools is significantly higher than other elementary schools in the district. Nine out of fifteen single-track English schools have identified ELL populations of twenty-five to fifty percent of its entire population, and three schools have an ELL population of twenty to twenty-five percent. EFI centers by comparison have fewer than ten percent of their population identified in this category. It should be noted, though, that when we looked at this, you know, certainly, a percentage of a total school population is an important thing, but there are a number of dual-track suburban schools that by sheer numbers, not by percentage, of overall students have certainly very high numbers of English language learners. One of them, the highest in the district, has almost three hundred and twenty-five of those students in an overall seven hundred and fifty total student population. We looked at students living in lower-income neighborhoods. Single-track English schools also have a high proportion of the student body who reside in lower-income neighborhoods. In 2016-17, twenty-seven out of the total one hundred and eleven elementary schools had a student body where fifty percent or more lived in low-income neighborhoods. Of those twenty-seven schools, nine are single-track English schools, and additional three single-track English schools had thirty-five to fifty percent of the student body who identified in this category. We looked at student achievement and EQAO results. Student achievement is one of the, is an important indicator of program success, obviously. Using EQAO data is one measure of student success, but finding discernible trends in this data in order to comment on an English program has proven elusive as far as this report goes, as outcomes can be different for grade three and grade six, and year-over-year trends are really difficult to make sense of. And so more work has to be done on this. Particularly where cohorts of students are small in number, this, to make sense of it, becomes even more elusive. The district results have repeatedly shown, however, that students with special education needs and English language learners tend not to perform as well as their peers on these assessments. The intersectionality of single-track English schools located in low-income neighborhoods with a student body with high English language learners and special education needs results in student outcomes that are not as successful as district and/or provincial norms. Where these complex factors interconnect, allocation of additional resources may be one of the solutions undertaken to address the issue. Currently, grade six EQAO results are not disaggregated by type of French programming in dual and triple-track schools. However, fifty-eight percent of the 2019 grade three cohort was enrolled in French immersion. So we do have that data. Other issues to consider, and we certainly tried to tackle this in this report, and this is germane when it comes to looking at what are we going to do about anything that we are discussing here tonight. Patterns of enrollment are established. When you have almost three-quarters of students beginning in EFI, that's not a trend that's going to be easily influenced or changed. We do not know the full impact of fifty-fifty kindergarten as yet. We do think, our gut was always, that EFI enrollment may increase as a result of that fifty-fifty kindergarten, but we're not showing that yet as far as the numbers go. We'll need a couple more years at least. We wonder if there's a way to look at the time allocation model that would assist in tackling this issue. This is a challenge, given practice and expectations, and we also have to consider it in light of the key considerations listed at the beginning of the report. So given the current moratorium on large-scale accommodation reviews, where a large number of students may be moved, and moving forward with this question, the complexity and the scale of the changes that may be required, we have to ask ourselves, how would we even go about conducting these accommodation reviews? Is this something that we'd look at district-wide, or is it something that we'd go part of the district in a phased manner? And we have to ask ourselves, you know, how hugely disruptive and complex it would be, and how long it would take for one area of the district to be addressed, and then waiting for phasing for the final area of the district to get to it for an accommodation review does create inequity. Trying to adjust the phased manner would take a great deal of time, and we think that would lead to inconsistencies.
Thanks. So lastly, we'll leave you with some guiding questions. How do the current delivery structures of French as a second language, core, middle, and immersion French align with the elementary school program framework? Are changes to the delivery of French immersion and English with core French programs needed to support the district's 2019-2023 strategic plan and goals? And how will this work impact the board's work plan? So those are for your consideration to help guide the discussion, if you so choose to reference them. For information, we note that Appendix H of the report catalogs a number of times the question of the English core French issue has been examined under a number of different lenses, at least since 2011. This is a report that strives to compile a good deal of what we hope is useful information and try to address what we understood to be the questions or issues coming forward in the motion, but understand there's much more work and consultation discussion yet to happen before we can chart a clear path forward. Thank you for your patience as we made this detailed presentation, and we'll now do our best to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for that very, very large and detailed report. It is a very, very complex issue. And before we have our discussion, I'd just like to maybe recall the director's advice, and that was try to focus our questions on things that are emerging from the data and keep our strategic plan in mind. And I'd like to maybe, for trustees, also to be reminded of the key considerations on page thirty-eight, as well as guided questions on page forty-six in reference to our discussion. So with that, I'd like to begin with Trustee Campbell.
Sir, can I be put on the speaker's list, please?
Yes, Trustee Schwartz.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to staff. I know that a lot of effort has gone into this reporting, not just planning staff amongst a lot of the senior staff, and it's very much appreciated. In particular, a couple of things I'd like to call out is the IEPs breakdown by program, tremendously appreciated, but also the work that staff did to find proxies that were workable for high school pathway, high school pathways information. So it's a lot, I think, for people to take in. As the director and staff and others have suggested, it's a complex set of questions, perhaps, that we have before us. You might as well put me again on the speaker's list, Mr. Chair. I'm going to confine my first sort of comments to sort of stepping through the report, sort of things that struck me. But before I do that, I'd like to sort of recap a bit of the original motivation for the motion. The staff did note that we're under a moratorium, and so the original thinking was that this is a good time to have a strategic discussion about what we're doing with respect to these programs and our approaches, if anything, while we're not in the middle of major accommodation reviews. In a sense, this is a gift. This is gift time, when we can look at things strategically potentially. As well as the graph shows, at least to date, there's been increasing differentiation between the programs. I'd like to note a couple of things that I think are very important. One is that on page three of the report, in our portfolio reference, staff do call out the fact that there is a structural inequity with respect to low numbers of students in classes. I think we heard that in the oral as well, and with respect, perhaps, to split grades on page four. Some of the suggestions are to effectively, no matter, you know, describe it in different ways, but effectively to importantly increase the congregation of English programs. That might be an option. Other actions that could be taken perhaps might mitigate the problem, suggesting that such an action might not have to be taken, at least in the long term. And then there is the idea, of course, of importantly, differentially resourcing English programs, where we have high transaction environments for teaching staff. Please put me on the list.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Campbell. I'll definitely put you back on the list for those good words. So right now, it's nine o'clock, and instead of interrupting the discussion in the middle, I'd like to take a five-minute break right now and come back with all these good thoughts in our head. So see you at approximately five after nine. And I'd just like to remind you that there are a couple of posters on the back with the expanded sets of these large tables that you should probably take a look at. All right, let's take our seats. All right, thank you very much, trustees. And I'm looking forward to a very fruitful discussion, so I'm going to start off with Trustee Ellis.
Okay, we're all here, I can go. Good report. It helps lay out some of the suspicions that we've had. One of the, and it's a process, and it was the motion, I know, but over the past few years, when I've raised the English program, it's been around the equitable outcomes that we see in that program, and which is alluded to a bit by the looking at where they go, their pathways in high school. And I think it's fairly, and that points out that the expectations and reality for those in the English program are not the same as that in the French. The French, you're more likely significantly to take an academic pathway. In the English, you're more, you know, it's the applied pathway is showing up much more. So although we need to perhaps look at that, one of the concerns that I have, and again, I'm not, you know, this report wasn't meant to explore it, but I think going forward on this, I would hope that we will consider how, within the reality of what we have, and knowing that's going to take many years to try to change any balance or adjust the thinking around French immersion versus English core, is how we as a board may address so that those students in the English program will have better outcomes on EQAO, will select more challenging pathways, if that's their desire to go the academic route. And I think we need to consider, as we go forward, a greater differentiation of resources to identified students and programs that may need support. We know that the English programs, it's harder to have a full class. Might we consider, instead of double or split grades and triple grades, that it will be equitable to add the teachers to those so that we can have single grades, and they may be of a lower student numbers in that, and that may help to address some of the issues around students' needs that we see showing up in the English program? Thank you.
Would you like to go on the list again, Trustee Ellis?
No, I said what I wanted to say. At this point, I'll see what comes up.
Thank you very much. Trustee Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to say a huge thank you to staff for the report itself. There's a lot of data. You can play with it six ways from Sunday and come out with different results, simply by the way you choose to categorize things. We know that some of the data was very solid. We know how many kids we have in our schools. I think that's a pretty solid number. When we start looking at some of the other aspects, though, it's not quite as solid as it looks. And as Manager Ostapichuk has already pointed out, when we look at the numbers at grade eight, for example, how much of that is the result of students choosing to change programs from French immersion to English? And how much of that is the result of students who have arrived in the board at different times and who have left the board to go to other school districts and so on? That we're not so sure about without doing a huge amount of work. So I think when we start asking questions and deciding what additional information, if any, we need to begin to get our heads around the issues we're dealing with here, I think we want to be very careful to think why we want that data and how it's actually going to support us to move forward. I think one of the problems we have is that we are not sure whether some of these things are symptoms, or whether they actually are problems. Is the low enrollment in some of our English programs, is that a symptom of something? Or is that a problem in itself? Or is it the result of something else that is going on that we haven't been able to put our finger on? This is not a simple dataset, and so I think one of the things we need probably to do to begin with is to start to think about what this really represents to us. Trustee Ellis has made reference to surfacing some of the things that had concerned him. I'm sure each one of us has things that concern us about how our English programs are currently running. That doesn't mean we don't also have concerns, although they may be different concerns, about how some of our other programs are running. When I look at the board as a whole, though, and I see all the program choices that we offer, I still keep going back to what the community view is in my area, and that is we really are talking about English and French programming. And I think we do need to consider with English, the alternative and the special education programs and any other programming that we're doing, because when parents are making choices, most of the time, they're looking at it in terms of English or French. And if you put me back on the list, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee Scott. Trustee Lyra?
I have a couple of questions to staff. My first question to staff is the memo that got handed out today says that partially-integrated students were not counted in the IEP, like percentage on students. Where do the partially-integrated students end up when they're not in their out-of-classroom setting?
Well, I'll call on Superintendent Simmons to help us with that.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, through you, just for clarity, and I'll speak in broad generalities, because we are always striving to meet the individual needs of students, partial integration is a placement as determined by an Identification Placement and Review Committee, and it is for students who are placed in a special education class more than 50% of the time and integrated into a regular class for at least one period a day. So I mention broad generalities because we may end up, there may in fact be, I'm aware of a couple firsthand, that there are exceptions to what I'm about to say, but by and large, most of our students in the elementary panel who are placed in a partially-integrated program are in our LD SIP program. There's about 112 of those placements in our district. Those students tend to, and again, please accept that I'm speaking in general terms, those students tend to receive their English and math programming in the LD SIP program, and then they're integrated for history, geography, phys ed, art, and so, and core French, and so on, for the remainder of the subjects, into the regular programs in those schools.
So in broad terms, would that be the English classrooms, the middle French immersion, or the early French immersion program?
Mr. Chair, in broad terms, it would probably be the English program, except obviously for core French. for core French being in French.
Thank you. I have a question about what do other boards do? We can't be the only board facing declining English enrollment and I'm wondering what other, what do other boards do to address this?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's a good question. We're not as familiar with other districts as we are with our own. It is a problem, to my understanding, more unique to Ottawa though, where the demand for French language programming is greater than in other areas throughout the province. So we are in a somewhat unique situation that way. I don't know if anyone's done a scan of other districts, I don't think that we have, but that's something that we could, the board could consider for information that I think would help get to that greater, the greater strategic question that they're trying to answer.
And I, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'll add to that, having some familiarity with other boards, I would concur with A.D. Reynolds that Ottawa is unique because the combinations of opportunities are probably more robust here in Ottawa than in many other districts. I would say though, that where it is that we do see with many districts where French immersion exists in concert with other, with the English language program, so a dual track if you will, that many schools who have that structure do experience an imbalance and a disproportionality around the uptake in French immersion per the English with core French track in those schools and that is not unusual across the province. And similar to, from, with Ottawa to other places in the province, we all share the challenge around acquiring French teachers.
I was reading the report and point 10 has us thinking about how to increase public awareness of the strengths of the English program or how to develop more consistency in communication about the English program. And to me, I don't think that's the issue. I think that we have seen a systemic difference in other parts of the report between the outcomes of the English program and the MFI or the EFI program. And so I think it's less about how do we communicate how great of a program this is and more about what can we as a board do to make this a better program? I think that the increase in people joining the French program has to do in part with the weakness of the English program and not with the strength of the French program. I think that we as a board need to be discussing what mechanisms do we have to make the English program better? What do, what can we do to fix the high rates of IEPs, to fix the high rates of classroom evacuations, to reduce the amount of time that students spend, or to increase the amount of time that students spend learning and supported? Or what other things do we as a board, mechanisms do we have to improve the program? Because I think, I think that the program itself needs to be improved. Does staff have a comment or, because I've seen some faces?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thanks, thanks. It's a good question and it's one that I, I can't give you a definitive answer to. I personally don't think that there is a problem with the English program or its delivery. I, I know that we have some excellent staff and teachers in that program and they're doing superb work in their classrooms. There are a lot of, you could speculate as to why then we may have higher instances of students with, you know, more profound learning needs where we're leading the classroom evacuations. Is that indicative of a problem in the English program? Or that we are struggling to adequately support those learners in the immersion programs? And that they find themselves in the English program by default? I don't know. It would take a greater analysis to, to understand that, but I'm, I, from my experience, we have not undertaken a thorough program evaluation, but the skill of the educators working in the English program, using the same provincial curriculum with the same general supports are, are just as good and in some instances, better than we find in our immersion programs.
I know, or I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that for example, Empower is only offered in English and that is a, a program that we, that we offer to certain students with IEPs. And given that it's only offered in English, we track people out of French if they have needs related to Empower and into the English program. Is that true of other exceptionalities or other supports that we offer? Because we, to my knowledge, we don't offer a French equivalent to Empower.
Mr. Chair, through you, it's true, the Empower program is delivered in English in our district, but it is available to students who are in the French immersion program. And if we were to take a look at some of the research that's included in the ministry document, including students with special education needs in FSL programs, the, the brief summary of research in that document does highlight some of the transferability of the skills learned in Empower to the French language. So things like phonological awareness can transfer or does transfer to students who are being, being in the French immersion program. We also do offer some various assistance and manager Kay may want to step in with respect to some programs that are available to support students in the French language, in the French language delivered or supported by our, our speech and language pathologists. The other piece that I would add to this is that oftentimes when students are being taught in a second language, the strategies that they're taught are explicitly taught in reading is one of the key supports that does help a student trans, does help develop a student's ability to read. And by that, when a student's in the FSL program and receiving very precise instruction in reading in the second language, that also will transfer back to the English program. So there are some various options. I don't know if you want to step in on the speech and language pathology thing?
I'll just add briefly, with respect to phonological awareness, which is one of the foundations to the development of literacy skills, all schools in our district have access to the Class Act Phonological Awareness Program in both English and French and therefore those supports are delivered to students as required in both of our, both of those program streams.
I have 10 seconds, if possible, I'd like to go back on the list. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Lyra. Trustee Fisher.
I think, Mr. Chair, sort of want to add to the chorus of, of thanks for the report. You know, I think, you know, as trustee Scott and others have indicated, this is an issue that I think has been growing over time and we've been trying to tackle it, you know, you know, I think ever since I've been on the board in various ways. And I think, you know, obviously it's, the questions that are being asked, there's just no way we're going to get our arms wrapped around them tonight and try to give you, I think, you know, good feedback and good, good direction in terms of where to go next and certainly hope that this will be a sort of a core element of our discussion at the retreat because I, I think that, that's, that's where rightfully belongs. But I do see, and this is going to sound like a very sort of generalist, you know, sort of opinion, but when we look at the, the various graphs, you know, I think it's, it's very clear to me that, you know, when you look at the growth of French immersion in English, it's going to be really difficult to course correct, I think that, that shift, I think it's, it's Ottawa. And I think as a board, for us to really contemplate, you know, how we find solutions to the problem in terms of having a robust French immersion program and a robust English offering, I think it's going to require some, some significant changes, you know, in the board in terms of how we, how we think about our board and how we deliver programs in services. It's not something that we can, I think, pretend to, to tinker with around the edges and, and then, you know, you know, come away with a, with a, you know, a solution that's going to be robust and sustainable. I just see, I just see the delta, you know, between the two trends being too, too significant. It doesn't mean that we can't, we can't do something important, but I think that, I think we, we can't underestimate the challenge that's, that's ahead of us. And again, I know that those are some, some generalized views and opinions and I just wish, you know, again, we, we could spend a whole weekend sort of going down and coming back up in terms of potential, you know, problems and, and solutions and I, and I hope we find the right time to do that because I don't, I don't think we're giving it the fullness of time and thought tonight, but I, I, I am trying to absorb what my colleagues are saying and what, absorbing what's in this report to figure out, you know, where we might go with this. So it's, it's, I appreciate, appreciate the report and, and hopefully this, this really does start a more substantive conversation because it's a, it, it goes to the core of the board and if we can't, if we can't figure it out, we might as well just become a French board. Or the alternative is, is to become a fully bilingual board, which would be the first time in Ontario, if not Canada. But I think the decision for me is that stark. You either become a French board or you become a fully bilingual board and, and you can't be somewhere in the middle. I think, I think the decision has to be that big and that, that radical unfortunately.
Thank you trustee Fisher. Trustee Huff.
I'll try to keep my focus here. I spent 13 years of university studying exactly this stuff, exactly. Early childhood language development, bilingualism, the variables that, that play into this. I have a master's degree in speech and language pathology. So when I look at this, it opens Pandora's box for me. It is a huge issue. I think I'm going to speak quite differently than, than trustee Fisher. I think that we are behooved to provide a robust English program in this city. I, I think it's absolutely mandatory. But I think what we may need to do is get our heads wrapped around the fact that what we are dealing with is such a dynamic situation of confounding variables and unpacking that, and we, we use this lovely term intersectionality, which just drives me mental. These are confounding variables. They are overlapped, they are intertwined and they have to be pulled apart. Now the question becomes one of, if we want to have something that looks like a robust English program, knowing full well that these confounding variables exist in these schools, what we need to do is look at what support needs to be in place, not only related to language, but related to the families, the cultures, the, the challenges that are in the communities of those schools as well. And we may need to look at a totally supportive mechanism here that fits around the language element. That may be our reality here. Part of the problem, I do think you have highlighted, is what people expect and perceive surrounding these programs. You know, making it very clear that we have schools that have space, so we use them to populate those, those programs that need a home. That's why these schools look like catchment basements. They are catchment basins. They, they really have become that because of the physical needs and constraints that we have in terms of our schools and what space is available. And to make that, to lay that on the table and say that is the reality, but be able to parse out the data, to look at the supports, make it very clear, these are the supports that are in place in the classroom, to be really open and transparent about what's going on in these facilities while you're trying to tease that apart is going to be important. So it's going to be important to, to fix the program and it's going to be important to set the message really clear about what's going on and what has happened historically. I think the grade two, grade six bailout from immersion can probably be settled fairly clearly because the, the history has been there. That grade two is when parents realize their child isn't having the success that they want to see. Since the early days of immersion in Quebec, it was, the first thing you could do was to get your child out of, of, of French education was to say, there's a language impairment situation and they had their, their ticket out the door. And we still use that philosophy to a certain extent as parents, as educators, to say, ah, well, we're, back on the list, please.
Thank you trustee Huff. Trustee Boothby.
Thank you and thanks for the report. Lots and lots of information in here. I, I share the same concern as trustee Ellis around all of this and I think this is why we've been asking this question for the last five, six, eight years, is the equity of outcome question. And when I look at the chart that we've just gotten here and I look at the concentration of IEPs in the English and alternative program, I think that certainly indicates one place where we've got some work cut out for us. But I, I think we need to, as trustee Huff says, I think we need some other information. And I know we have gone out two times now to our community on thought exchange and talked and asked a lot of questions, but I'm not sure if we've overtly gone out and asked parents, why are you choosing certain programs? I know superintendent Buffonier a number of years ago did a little research project on the English language program and I see that a couple of the questions that we're seeing under section 10 kind of, to me, resonate with what questions were being asked at the time. But I, I still think we need to have a little bit better understanding around a few vital questions like, why are parents choosing French immersion at both of the levels? Is it because we live in this bilingual city that parents feel like they have to give their children every opportunity and one of those opportunities is French immersion? And they don't understand what the DELF has shown us, which is the outcomes are pretty similar across all three French programs? Are we, when we look at page seven of the report and we talk about referrals, mostly talking here about ELL children, so who are making those referrals and what is our criteria for that? That's another thing because if we're already deciding that our English language learners need to be in the English program and then we don't continue to monitor and suggest to parents, maybe now you can reach, you can have your kids reach out a little bit more, have we just all of a sudden decided in grade one or grade two that we're effectively streaming children into that? Another thing, I think we just really need to understand better why families are making choices. And when I look at this new data that we've gotten on IEPs, and I'll just finish this and I'll go on the back, I really wonder when, when we see how many parents of children with IEP are choosing alternate, and I've been on ASAC ever since I've been a trustee and I've seen that trend. I'm wondering, do we know, are they choosing that because the resources are better there or what, what is that choice? So I think we need to understand much better before we start unpacking this, as trustee Huff says, why are parents being driven to these choices? And there's a lot of great data in here, but I don't think I see the analysis on that, which I think is a really gigantic question. I'm not sure we've actually gone out and asked that yet.
Thank you very much trustee Jenikins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the staff for preparing this report. Just echoing trustee Boothby, why are parents choosing the French immersion program? I think it's directly related to the city that we live in. Ottawa is a bilingual city, we're public servants, we have federal government departments here, municipal departments. If you look at the demographics of our students' families, majority of them are public servants. Canada now is becoming very strong in the tech industry. Perhaps if we want to enhance our English programming, we could consider more technical programming. I also think the other areas such as, you know, plumbers and electricians, I think we really need to promote those programming. I, I think we're sort of continuing, I think our French program will continue to strengthen, so we really need to consider how we can better our English programming because we are very much a bilingual city and I don't think that's going to change.
Thank you trustee Jenikins. Now we are on to our second time speakers, trustee Campbell.
Trustee.
Sorry, sorry, you're right trustee Schwartz.
You forgot about me.
I, I maybe did. Trustee Schwartz.
Thank you. So I did have a number of questions and, and thank. Thank you. So I did have a number of questions and, and thank, I'll add my thanks to stop for the report. I found it very interesting to look at, and even just to try and follow the data. I'm going to start off with, I guess, a broader question of, when was a thorough program evaluation or review actually done? And why I ask that question is in part because on page two of the report, under the key considerations, I think a really key part that we're looking at is, are the challenges based in the delivery of English programming tied to operational issues, program quality, et cetera. And I don't think you can get to that, or get answers to those questions unless there's a thorough program review actually done. So just, I can answer that question first.
Mr. Chair, through you, we did include on page 69 in the report, we did include an appendix that listed the major motions and investigations that have been done by this board and by staff, beginning in December 2011 to January 2017. As far as, as a direct and fulsome review of, of the program itself, I think probably that was most directly done in 2011. But there have been a number of peripheral questions that have come up again and again and again about English, and it's been touched on many times. So that's why we included that appendix.
Yeah, thank you. And I did look at that appendix again, so it didn't answer the question of whether there was a thorough program review done. And again, the reason I'm asking that is because it was raised by Associate Director, that some of the questions would be answerable within thorough program evaluation, potentially. And so that just, and I guess, part of, part of where I'm coming from is I'm harking back to one of the very first decisions we had to take when I started as a trustee in my first term, was around closure of a school in Munster. And that was because of very low enrollment. And I guess my question here is, seeing some of these trends are quite concerning. When you're looking at classrooms of maybe 10 kids, at what point do we hit sort of that critical urgency where we might actually be confronted as trustees with having to do boundary changes and so on, because there's just not a critical mass of kids?
Mr. Chair, through you, there are a number of indicators that we use over time. Certainly, the district needs analysis, and the larger chart that we indicated here, indicated when we had 10 or less in classrooms. We also look at, at the, the number of double or treble grades that, that we may have, and the overall student enrollment. It's not just single-track English schools. It can be an English program within a dual-track school that is also experiencing pretty low enrollment. So I wouldn't say there is one key indicator, but we try and keep our finger on the pulse of that, of that decline. And when it becomes something that is critical, and bring that forward in a timely manner to look at it from an accommodation standpoint.
Okay, thank you. That's certainly very helpful. And then, on the accommodation review side, do we have a better idea when that may be lifted, the moratorium, provincial moratorium might be lifted?
Mr. Chair, no, we do not.
I'm sorry, I'm not in the room to see people's faces when I ask that question. Okay, and then I, I'm just going to turn to another thing that just left out at me. And it actually doesn't deal with the English program, but deals with French teaching positions and vacancies, and the fact that across the province, there's a shortage of qualified teachers. And I guess, I ask that question because, as a parent who chose French immersion for our children, because as public servants, we saw the importance of having French and didn't know that the DELF scores were equivalent when we had our kids starting kindergarten. And I think that's part of the issue, is that we are a bilingual city, and therefore we want our kids to be able to succeed if they choose public service careers and so on, and be able to move up the management ladder and so on, within the public service. So my question really is, what does the OCS, OCDS be actually doing to address the challenge of shortage of qualified French teachers, as we see it as, as parents in the system?
Thank you, Chair. And I'll, I'll respond to that question first. And perhaps Superintendent McCoy may add, if I've left anything out. So, Trustee Schwartz, you've certainly raised the million-dollar question, which is about staffing our FI programs on a consistent and sustained way. And I would suggest to you that this is the million-dollar question because every school board in the province is asking that question. And so, a part of our challenge in continuing to open our doors and open our programs, and, and bring in students on, at will, is in fact, the demand outstrips the availability of, of this staff. So there have been multiple things that boards have done in terms of recruitment, recruitment far and wide, ensuring that, and we have all, we've talked about the fact that when we go out on recruitment, we bring real estate information and childcare information with us, because we also are selling a place to live. And we do have an advantage in Ottawa in that it is, it is in very much someplace that younger people, people who are graduating from university and wanting to start, can find their start. That said, however, even with those kinds of efforts, other efforts around growing some of our cohorts in, within, and our relationships with our, our post-secondary institutions, it still creates a number of challenges. We do also know that we have the emerging challenge of longer program time for people in education programs. And the possibility of the math assessment may, in fact, present an emerging obstacle, or we're not sure where that will land. So we certainly concur, that is a challenge. We have tried to optimize a variety of things. And I think I can speak on behalf of Superintendent McCoy, that when it is that senior negotiators meet, typically every six or eight weeks or so, this is typically a part of the conversation, because we're continually trying to beg, borrow, and steal, whether it's bodies, or people, or ideas. But that certainly is a topic. So I don't have an answer for you in terms of the solution, but I certainly can tell you that we have been trying to invent all kinds of new ways to attract and retain quality teachers for our French immersion program. But we do not have a solution to the problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have no idea how much time I actually have on the clock, because I don't have one in front of me.
Can I put you back on the list, Trustee Schwartz?
Um, that's fine. I'll defer to others.
Thank you very much. And we do have another first-time speaker, and student trustee Wujiwira.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to touch upon the fact that by the time students do reach high school in the French immersion program, the numbers do dwindle. And I know that A.D. Reynolds did touch on this, but is there any research that the board has done into why there's such a dwindling rate of enrollment in the French immersion FIF course, for example, at the high school level? Because from the data, it caught my attention that in the younger grades, a lot of students are enrolling in this. By, by the time we get to grade 11, grade 12, the final years of our French education, it's dwindled down to potentially like 15 to maybe 10% of the school that's in FIF, at least at Bell High School, and some of the other schools. I know that you did touch upon the lack of courses that interest students. Are there any other reasons why students are dropping out of French in grades in high school, even though they've been doing French throughout their younger years? Thanks.
Thank you for the question. And then through you, Mr. Chair, and Madrasa Fajak may want to add. There's a, there's a few reasons. We don't have necessarily a comprehensive study that says this is definitively why that happens, but there's a lot of competing pressures, as I'm sure you are well, well aware, of students moving through secondary school, often as they become more aware of what their post-secondary pathway is. If it requires that they say, take three sciences and two or three MAS, then it does become difficult, especially in smaller schools. But even in large schools, to address all the conflicts that arise in the schedule, to ensure that they're able to complete that four U French credit, which is a requirement to earn the certificate. So by grade 12, they just may, so they may stay in immersion all the way through, but not be able to complete. Also, we do have a number of students, I'll use my own daughter as an example, currently in grade 12, did her four U in grade 11, did the DELF, that's received her B2, and now feels no pressure to get her immersion certificate. And I think the emergence of the DELF has also led to a number of students just maybe not opting to pick up those optional credits, instead doing something, something else in their grade 11 or 12 year. So those are some reasons, but they're not the only ones. There would be others as well. For example, students just realizing that with what their intended course, sort of post-secondary pathway is, say if it's apprenticeship or work, and they may believe that, you know, that completing that immersion certificate is not necessarily as relevant as, say, picking up some other work experience, like a co-op. So there's all, you know, a lot of individual stories there, but all those things do combine to that.
Thank you. And I actually do have the similar, my personal pathways also like that, where I am continuing in FIF without the certificate. My next question would be, is there a way that the board could encourage students who have been in French immersion since their primary years to continue in high school solely by taking the one French-language credit? Because through my personal experience in pathway through high schools, I have seen that even the students who are just simply taking FIF for you has significantly dropped in, with my peers who've been taking French since the younger grades, and it's significantly dropped where the board is putting resources for the 70% of students that do enter it in primary grades, just to have a lot of them drop out completely out of French. Are there any strategies perhaps that the board could implement to help students stay in the French stream?
I, I, I don't know if anyone else has answered that one. I don't think it's a problem that we've necessarily really looked at, particularly in the transition to, to secondary school. We've seen, you know, those exit points in the earlier grades, primary and junior, that I know caused some concern. I don't think we've deployed any, any particular strategies, other than providing students with information regarding their options and encouragement, I hope. But no, I don't, I don't think we've undertaken anything in particular, or are aware of anything that we should be undertaking to help increase that retention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just would like to remind everyone, we're really talking about the issues and problems with the English program. So if you, if we could try to just keep our focus on that, it'd be much appreciated. And we're on to our second-time speakers, and that's Trustee Campbell starting. Thanks.
Chair, I'm bewildered. I don't know how to continue. There's so much to say. I'm not sure I'll get on again to speak, so I'm going to pick up my pace and fire out some ideas. So first of all, in, in reaction to some of what I've heard, I also have wondered whether we shouldn't declare ourselves a bountiful board with a special appeal to the province. And it's maybe something to consider at some point. I do want to state, I think, my own personal belief in the importance of FSL, but not just for academic-oriented kids, or federal government-oriented kids. We do live in eastern Ontario. There is an Ottawa fact. And I would argue that FSL oral proficiency is probably at least as important for people going on to man service counter, or work in the trades, or anything else. If they're working in the Ottawa area, it's an important advantage. So I really think we have to get away from thinking of this as an academic thing, but it's really a, a workplace advantage for kids going to, on any pathway. And I think that's the way I really, I really look at it. I do want to draw people's attention to a meta-study that was done by this board some years ago. Some of the key findings from it were that SpecEd kids, supported in the same way, generally speaking, did no worse in French immersion than in the English program. I think that's a very important point out. So when you see these disparities, it's a problem. It shouldn't exist. Similarly, newcomers and ELLs, if anything, as I recall from the meta-study, did better, thank you very much, in French immersion, is often their third or fourth language. So if we see these disparities, I think there is a problem here. This is not necessarily something natural, or that we should accept. My understanding is that there is a transferability question in, in the literature. Would enjoy exploring that further with respect to SpecEd language supports in English versus French. That's perhaps something to be further explored. I am aware that other boards, French boards, likely offer services in French. That's maybe something we could explore. I think that it's really important to note in the report that the MFI and EFI outcomes are largely the same by high school. And that really raises the question, since we have many more precious FSL minutes, staffed by hard-to-find instructors in EFI, that effectively, it's an inscapable conclusion to me, that we have a lot of waste FSL minutes in the EFI program. Effectively, the outcomes are the same, we have waste EFI minutes. And in a situation where we have a hard time finding instructors, it really begs the question of whether we need to redeploy our FSL resources in some regard. I'm at four seconds, and I guess put me on the list, but I don't know if I'll get back on.
Thank you very much. Trustee Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think I'm probably another one who's wondered from time to time, particularly now that we have the DELF results, whether we actually do need to continue with our existing French as a second language specialized program delivery. That certainly would be a huge and controversial thing to do, would disrupt just about every school in the system, and would probably make most of us very unpopular in a lot of different quarters. That doesn't mean necessarily that it wouldn't be the right thing to do. The thing that I do think we need to, to think long and hard about, though, is the thing we don't want to do. I recalled earlier today, a presentation I attended at one of the ARA meetings about five years ago, on what was described as school policy backfire, which is a version associated with unintended consequences. And when, when school boards, for the best of intentions, put policies in place, and then discover in some instances that not only did the policies not achieve what was wanted, they may have achieved, in fact, the exact opposite effect and made things worse. And I thought back to some of the history of how we got to where we are, and begin to wonder, how many of our policy decisions that have been made by this board over a period of time are going to have unintended consequences, or will become policy backfires? For example, our decision to implement the 50-50 kindergarten program for students. We don't have a report on how that's really working yet. What we do know is that it certainly makes it difficult to do a seamless day for our youngest learners with consistent personnel in the classroom. We had hoped that it might lead more students to stay in the English program with core French, because they would have a greater grounding in French, and therefore would be able to make more out of the core French piece of it in the, in the subsequent grades. But in fact, for over the three years of data that we have, we are seeing a further uptick in the shift towards, towards early French immersion choice. There are so many things that we don't know when we start making these decisions. If we're going to take action as a result of reviewing the data that staff have assembled here and thinking hard about it, I think we want to be very, very cautious in what we do. And I'll just stop there.
Thank you very much, Trustee Scott. Trustee Lara?
So the implicit promise of public education is that every child gets equal access to succeed. Every child will have an equal opportunity to go to university. succeed. Every child will have an equal opportunity to go to university or to graduate high school. And I would argue that we are bending, if not breaking, that promise to the students we put in single-track English schools. When of our 15 single-track English schools, nine of them are in low-income communities, and three of them have 35 to 50, and three additional have 35 to 50% students from low-income communities, how are we not reinforcing a class divide? How are we not continuing to build on existing oppressions that exist in society? How are we not breaking that promise of public education to these families? And I think that we, as a board, need to do something to fix this, because it's not acceptable that the programs that are most failing are those in low-income communities, the programs with the few, with students going on to university tracks in high school come from the communities that are already going to be having the hardest time. And I think that we, as a board, need to, when we do the budget next year, look at what we can do, where we can apply extra funding, to make up that difference. Because at the end of the day, the communities that need our support aren't getting enough of it, because as of right now, they're still not succeeding. I don't have any questions. I don't have any, any things. I, I just, I'm disappointed.
Thank you. Trustee Huff?
I'll try to wrap a few things here. I echo that disappointment as well, because it is, it comes down to that confound, that confound of all the things that go on to build a school where you have a number of families selecting to study, to, to have an English core program. What, what are the factors that are coming into that, that decision that the family is making? And I think that, that was the point that I was going to get to, that Trustee Boothby brought up. We need to ask those questions. We need to ask the questions specifically at grade two, and people are exiting immersion. Are you exiting because you feel your child is not succeeding? Do you feel there's not support? We need to know why these people are making these decisions. And, you know, at, at the grade six, moving into the high school years, there, there are so many variables, you know, even from the perspective of the student who wants to be more successful. They're more likely to be more successful in classes they take in their first language. And that counts to getting into university. That matters. So we're very pragmatic as parents. We're very pragmatic as teenagers when we're trying to decide our paths about what we're going to do. But I think we need to stop speculating about these things and actually ask. I think we need to ask those questions. Why are these decisions being made? And that, further to that, asking is asking those families in these communities, why are they choosing their particular school? Are they choosing it because they think that the English, the early immersion program is going to be better because they think their child won't succeed if they can't support the French language in their own home? Is that why they're not putting them in immersion programs? We need to ask those questions. And I just want to touch on one last thing about Rob's comment about the wasted EFI minutes. And I, I hear that, but I want to draw your attention to the fact that we know a great deal of difference exists between how children learn language when they are young and how children learn language when they are older. And when they're coming at that problem space as older children, they're approaching it from a much more academic perspective than they are as early communicators coming at it from the early immersion program. And so you might need to get to the same endpoint, this number of hours, when you're looking at the difference between deductive and inductive reasoning in your learning processes. So I, I would be very cautious if we decided that those hours were wasted without some real academic study into that particular issue. And that's it. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Trustee Boothby?
Thank you. And I will try not to belabor too much. And I agree with, with Trustee Lyra. And I think I kind of sum it up in streaming. Are we streaming kids? And that's what I was trying to get to before, is some of the questions that we've actually asked in this report, I think are really important. Under section 10, questions C, D, and E, I think are key, vitally important questions, as well on page five of the report. And sorry, I'm looking at my previous one, so I don't know what folio it is. But the second to last paragraph there, where we talk about what are the factors that influence the decision to enroll and applied, I think those are all just vital questions. And, and the end outcome of not getting a full understanding of those, and then perhaps what we need to do then is change our culture, that we stop streaming kids. We've, we've tried to do that in some of our other programming, particularly around high-needs programs that we have in the district over the past four or five years. Maybe we need to be doing that now with our English and our French immersion programs, and making sure that once a child or a child's parent selects a program, that, that they don't end up there just because, year over year, they do it. We need to make sure that we're challenging the thinking and we're challenging the opportunities that we're either affording children or we're taking away from children.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Schwartz, I had you on my list a second time?
Yeah. Really, I just wanted to get back to sort of the, and I really do appreciate the discussion that's been had tonight. I think a number of trustees have raised concerns that, that I hear both in my community, but that I also have in, in having been a trustee, and, and as a parent within, within this board. And certainly, I think the, the points that were just raised by Trustee Boothby are quite important. And the question I've had all along is what sort of streaming might be happening, and how we might deal with that. I do come back to the question, though, about sort of the French language piece. And one of the reasons I didn't support the 50/50 decision that our board took previously for kindergarten was for the very fact that I was concerned about what the implications would be on the English program. And I'm, I'm just curious from staff, at what point are we going to be seeing reports on, on progress on the 50/50?
Mr. Chair, through you, I can begin to answer that, but my, my contribution would simply be one of statistical analysis, demographics, telling you what impact that would have over time. I think we're into year three of that data. There isn't a huge statistical variation about the uptake at this point in time, but it may influence over time. I think we, from a planning perspective, would like to see about five years. And I'm sure there may be something that Associate Director Reynolds may want to add with regard to what they feel that the success of the program is.
Thank you. Actually, I'm gonna throw it over to Executive Officer Giroux. I do believe we have something scheduled that'll address some of...
So this is on our work plan and an initial report sometime between the spring and fall. One of the things we've been grappling with in the report is, how do we get feedback from parents about their experience? And how do we differentiate between the parental experience for those who had kids in the program before versus this is the only program that they've known? So there's some unique challenges to pulling that part of the feedback. It's not impossible. We also have talked a little bit about teacher feedback and how to get that input, and then looking at some of the other data. So some work we're doing with program and learning. We've done some preliminary work and some design in the data collection process, but definitely will look to that, as I say, either late in the school year, more likely early in the fall next year.
Okay. And the reason I raise the question is, it comes back again to my question earlier around the shortage of French teachers. Three years ago, our board made a decision to implement 50/50, and yet we're still facing French teaching position vacancies and shortages. So I, I would hope that as a board, we're also looking at how we're going to deal with, and I realize it's a provincial issue, but we made a decision at this board to increase the number of French classes essentially across the system. And we're still having French teacher shortages. So that concerns me greatly. I know we're talking about an English program here, but we're also talking about sort of overall, that if, if the English programming is suffering for a variety of reasons, at what point is the EFI program going to be suffering because we don't actually have the teaching staff we need? And, and then, you know, contributing even more issues to the perception of public education and in choices around coming to the OCDSB versus going to the French, French Board, which is now opened up, the restrictions from what they used to be, if anyone can now go to a French school. So I just have a number of concerns related to the EFI program, let alone the English program. So I'd like to know that staff are actually looking at dealing through code or some other mechanism, talking to the province about the particular unique nature of the Ottawa Carlton District School Board and the French programming that we have here. And that's, I know we're dealing with an English program, but that was really more important to me that I wanted to talk about the French, because most of, that's mostly what I hear from the parents that I serve.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Schwartz. I think staff is gonna take, take your questions under advisement and have some clarity at a later point. Trustee Ellis?
Thank you. The DELF has been used as a data set for when we're looking at the success of various French streams and that. So I'm just, I'd like to have a clear understanding of the students who take the DELF. Is it all EFI and MFI and core students who take the DELF?
I'm gonna ask Manager Ortesky to step up, as she's more familiar with those details regarding the DELF.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Students who are enrolled in a, an FSL language course, so immersion extended or core French at the grade 12 level, are entitled to participate in the DELF. We have, I'm gonna say approximately 86% of our eligible student population participating each year. And the DELF is done in both the fall semester and spring semester.
So those are 86% of the FSL students. So that, that gives us a pretty good grouping to compare EFI and MFI?
Yes. And we have done analysis at the B2 level, where we had sufficient numbers. And so that is the most challenging level of the DELF that students participate in. And when we look at the overall outcomes, success rates of students who had been in a grade eight early French immersion versus a grade eight middle French immersion program, we see no statistically significant differences between the students and their success rates on the B2 level.
First, are there students in the English program, core French, who take the DELF as well? And if so, what's the percentage of those?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have all of the numbers in front of me, but for the students who are in core French, we have a fairly high percentage of the ones that do challenge the DELF, challenging at the B1 level. We have about a couple dozen, maybe annually, challenging the A2 level. We might have a handful, I don't know the exact number again, challenging B2. But the majority of them would be challenging B1.
So I guess I'm, I'm interested in the, the numbers of those core French students. Is it like 50% of students in core French who take the DELF?
I would need to go back to our, I wouldn't want to say that right now. I'd have to go back to look at our specific numbers. We would have information from last year, I believe, that I could pull and provide in a follow-up communication.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, the, the FSL at 80%, that's not, you know, that's a big enough number that I don't think we need, we can take that success rate and the data that we get from it, because they're not really self, it's not a small self-selecting. Around the core, just, just to, you know, to understand the data, I'm trying to understand how self-selecting the students who take the DELF might be. So the number of students in core French, the percentage of those students who are taking it would be helpful for me as I look at that data and understand that there may be some self-selecting, and perhaps there's, there's not as, I thought there might have been in, in FSL.
Yeah, I just, I don't...
And I think that, you know...
Right. And I just don't have the specific numbers here tonight, but we can certainly provide that for you.
Certainly. I think a memo would be helpful around the, the DELF and, and what that shows as we go forward, speaking about this.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we're back to Trustee Campbell.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'll try and be brief. With respect to DELF, I can start with so many things, but with respect to DELF, my understanding is that intensive French, which we don't have here, but which is fully implemented now for some years in Eastern Ontario Catholic, and which has been implemented in New Brunswick, I would argue that we are more similar to New Brunswick than really any other board in Ontario. That's actually where, what we're comparable to, where something like 80% of kids are going into French of one kind or another, and it's highly promoted. You can't go into nursing unless you have a DELF 1.2, etc. So, and that's a French environment for all work streams, all pathways, really the same thing that we have here in Ottawa. Intensive French, my understanding is, is basically it requires ECF preparatory. Once kids have a solid grammar in both English and somewhat formally in, in French, you hit them with over 240 hours in grade four and get them to DELF 1.2. After that, they have an internal grammar, and you can actually drop the French minutes, and they self-acquire thereafter. There is very good research on this, and apparently it works. Following that pathway, you outperform EFI. At least, this is some of the research I've heard. So I really do think that we need to look at our models and recurrent research around pedagogy for FSL. We may not be as research-driven as we think we are with respect to FSL instruction at the board. My understanding, even in ECF, is that we have 40 minutes a day, but the research suggests that that's inefficient. And what you need to do for oral proficiency acquisition is skip and gang into 80 minutes a day. So there's more of an immersive oral experience, and you have much better uptake. So, so again, I really think we need to look at what we're doing here. With respect to market share, and that's been mentioned with more respect to the French public boards, I think we do have to be concerned about FI leakage market share to the French boards. But I think we have to equally or more concerned about English core French leakage to our coterminous Catholic board. If our English core French program suffers reputationally, very importantly, and continues to do so in an increasing way, then I suspect we're going to see increased migration to the coterminous English program. And indeed, they offer 75 minutes of French a day, twice what we offer with respect to the English core French program. I really think we need to look at how we provide French. If we're going to provide more French minutes in English core French, effectively, we're bored of extremes. We've way more FI minutes, maybe waste minutes, in our FI program overall, in our coterminous board, way fewer English core French minutes. We're bored of extremes, effectively. And I wonder about the grade twos sorting out. That's not a natural transition point. We have very high FI in grade one. Is it needed? Is it a barrier? So I really think we have to look at what we're doing with respect to our program.
Thank you very much, and thank you for a great discussion, trustees. I'm gonna leave the last word to the director on this.
Thank you. And through you, Chair. So I think it would be fair to say that trustees have left no stone unturned. And...
trustees have left no stone unturned, um, in that the questioning and the sharing, uh, of your perspectives. Uh, I think some of the key pieces that essentially has come out of the discussion for, um, staff to consider as we pursue and contemplate next steps are some of the key issues around unintended outcomes of previous decisions while the best intentions were driving those decisions. We are now having an assessment of the impact of those decisions, um, and questioning, um, how it is that we might go forward. And I think that the terminology about, uh, policy backfire perhaps is something that, uh, might be due for some research there. I think that it's clear that trustees have agreed that their question, there, there's clearly, uh, discrepancy, uh, around the nature of the service that are, be, is being provided to a variety of diverse student populations, um, through some of the program offerings. Uh, and I think one of the key questions that has certainly come through in this discussion is the fact that, um, we need to ask the question, why? Um, it is encouraging that, um, we didn't go down the road of what more data we need. I think that we've all agreed that the data certainly tells a story, uh, but one of the trustees tabled the statement, "Don't speculate, ask the question why." So, as we understood, to help us to understand the context for the decisions, um, and we have also contemplated the fact that, while it is that there's a, a term that has been thrown around, the notion of streaming, I would suggest to you that the, the speaking to the notion of self-selection, um, and the fact that, um, there is in fact, um, some nature of sorting that is emerging from the community itself, uh, from families and parents, is probably a reality, uh, but we certainly cannot excuse ourselves from how it is we, as a system, have informed some of that self-selection, and so that is another why question that emerges. Um, you have also tabled the notion of, um, looking at outcomes and impacts, um, and I think that a number of trustees have taken us to the place of, have we truly interrogated how it is that we're coming to the impact and the outcomes that we are seeing, why those impacts and outcomes are there, and what is the value of some of the things that we've placed value on? And so, when we start to talk about, for example, the DELF, um, uh, in comparison to this, the, um, the FI, the, the FI certificate, it raises a question about some of our assumptions. All this to be said, um, and I think I, I wanna kind of round the bend to a very key statement that was made by one of the trustees around considering the underlying promise of public education. And so, when it is that we have made a commitment that all students, um, are to be successful, and that is our commitment to our kids, uh, then we do need to continue to interrogate the, uh, impacts and the outcomes intended or not, um, in terms of the work we're doing. And I think that, um, we certainly, as staff, appreciate that trustees have charged us with continuing to revisit the decisions when we consider how it is the outcomes look for our children, and the fact that we might make some decisions to, to make changes now, but again, in five years' time, the interrogation will again be necessary. So, at the end of the day, when we think about where this will take us, we have fur, much further conversation to have, but I think it's encouraging that out of the conversation today, that the direction that we, as staff, can take away is that the interrogation is not necessarily, uh, to unearth more numbers, but to understand the experiences of our students, to help us as a group to learn more together when we get together for our retreat time, and think about some of the options that are available, and that, uh, many of the trustees have, in fact, raised the notion that now it's a question of research, and comparison, and contemplation, as opposed to a further delving into numbers. So, we certainly, as staff, take that away, and, uh, we look forward to an opportunity to do, um, an exploration around the notion of data literacy, because I think that's what, that's what has been raised here, um, and then further take that forward, uh, in February to look at, um, an exploration of what the possibilities could be. I'd like to close my comments, uh, with your indulgence, Chair, uh, by really expressing thanks to the staff who engaged and invested in this. Um, I certainly hope, and I recognize and appreciate that trustees have all, uh, 201, appreciated the staff's effort here, uh, because you, um, I, I can tell you, Trustee Campbell, that the term wicked problem, uh, has been applied number, in a number of conversations pertaining to the motion that has been tabled here. Um, but it also, uh, we recognize and appreciate that trustees have, have, uh, valued the time spent by staff in doing this. So, I, I know that trustees have noticed, um, you know, the, the nature of collaboration, and I want to ensure that, you know, I do identify that we had the planning, the curriculum, the read, the special ed teams all involved. Um, we also had the work and support of, um, former Associate Director, retired Associate Director, Diane Judy Hugo, who was a part of this work. Um, we can, we had our Board Services team, uh, involved around the, um, policy and procedure components, and certainly you can see that our, um, whole team in, in turn engaged in this in more than one, uh, iteration, so the entire senior team, um, to be thanked there. Um, and I would say, as a last comment, we really and truly don't intend to frighten our newest superintendents, uh, because we started with a six-hour senior team meeting today, and we have concluded with a very robust discussion this evening. Um, but again, we do appreciate the feedback, and I have, uh, taken copious notes, as I do know many staff have done, and we will bring your thoughts forward to start to design our next steps, to continue to interrogate this question.
Thank you very much, Madam Director. Um, so, we're very quickly gonna go through these information items, any report from OSPBA this evening?
No, Chair.
And we have a new ministry initiative memo 20-dash-zero-zero-one, I imagine that is there for the trustees to read, Madam Director?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay, and we have, uh, three reports from OSTA, um, provided for information for, uh, Trustee Perusal. Um, Trustee Boothby?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to ask, uh, well, I'll ask one question. On page 87 of the, uh, OSTA report, under Section 16, where it talks about new business, there's a comment in here that says, "Staff explained that several aspects need to be considered." OSTA policy states that rides should not exceed 90 minutes one-way. That's horrifying to me, um, and I'm not sure how the policy got there, uh, because last I understood, we were looking for an average of no more than 45 minutes one-way, and this is effectively twice that, and I sure don't remember that ever coming around this board table, and I think that's frankly unacceptable. So, I guess I'd like to leave that with our OSTA people and have that looked at, but I was horrified when I saw that.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Chair. Um, that's certainly something that I can say is duly noted, and, uh, I will make a note to ensure that it comes back to our Board Director tables, uh, table for, um, OSTA's next meeting.
Thank you very much, and I'd just like to ask, is there any new business? And seeing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.